Mine's been real stubborn today, too.
Always. When is Mary not looking at us? I know. She puts the rest of us to shame in that.
I grew up in the 50s and 60s. Just saying, that makes a difference. It really does.
So did you start moving to your offices today, Stephen?
Yeah, well, they've got set up. Yeah.
Okay, I got it. I got it. I'm good.
There you go. They don't have to come for very far.
I think there's one over there. I just don't have a.
I moved around. I guess we reestablished, they had an attitude inside of them, like an elected luncheon.
No, I was.
Especially with the new sheriff.
So this is new.
All right, Chris on Zoom, can you hear us? Is there anyone else on Zoom that we? All right. Oh, go ahead and open the meeting. Yeah, okay. It is 4:03 January 3rd. I will call to order this first meeting of the year of the Grand County Commission. Present, we have Commissioners Evan Clapper, Kevin Walker, Bill Winfield, Trish Hadeen, Mike McCurdy, Mary McGann, and myself, Jacques Cattler. We also have elected officials, Stephen Sox, County Attorney, Gabriel Wojtek, County Clerk, as well as County Administrator Mallory Nassau, Associate Administrator Quinn Hall. We'll all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, as is usual, on the first meetings of the year, our first order of business will be the nomination and appointments of a Commissioner Chair and Vice Chair. Yes, Mary?
Yes, I would like to nominate Jacques Cattler for Chair. He did not get to serve an entire year and has done an excellent job. He took the place of Gabriel Wojtek, who was the previous Chair before Jacques. And I think having a whole year to do that job is a good idea. I'd like to nominate him as Chair and Kevin Walker as Vice Chair. Because he's willing to do it. And he'll do a great job. He's the master of Robert's Rules. He gave me a lot of lessons, so he'll be a great Vice Chair.
Thank you for your support, Mary.
I'll second that.
Thank you. I have a motion on the table and a second discussion. Anyone like to say anything? And I would like to say thanks for your vote of confidence, Mary. And it was quite the learning experience to kind of be thrust into that role my first year, and I feel elected going into his second year, so I appreciate it. Any other discussion? All right, seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand, say aye. Motion passes unanimously. Senator Lisa? Yeah. Sounds good. August, can you hear us on Zoom? We're just testing.
Yes, I can hear you.
August?
Can you hear me?
I don't see a microphone by August. His name.
Tammy, can you hear us on Zoom?
I can hear the mission and August.
August just said something. August can hear us, but we can't hear him.
On speakers, Real Tech Audio.
And August, could you say something?
Yes, testing, testing, testing.
Perfect. Got it. Thanks, August. Okay, it is 4:16, and I'll reconvene this regular Grand County Commission meeting, January 3rd, all present as previously. We are on our Citizens to Be Heard segment. There are no citizens to be heard in the Commission chambers, so if there is someone on Zoom who would like to be heard, you may do so at this time. Please raise your hand or unmute. And it looks like we don't have any citizens to be heard on Zoom either.
Thank you, Matt. Happy New Year.
Yes.
We have no Presentations Department reports or Agency reports at this meeting, so we'll move on to Approval of Minutes. So Approval of Minutes from December 20th, 2022, minutes of the regular meeting of the Grand County Commission.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from December 20th, 2022, Grand County Commission.
Thank you, Trish.
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Hadeen and a second by Commissioner McGann. Any discussion of the minutes of the previous meeting?
Thank you, Kate.
As always. All right, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of Approval of the Minutes, raise your hand, say aye. And the motion passes unanimously. We are on to Ratification of Bills and General Reports. Our bills this period are for general bills in the amount of $912,117.73. Total payroll in the amount of $311,027.10. Total bills and payroll in the amount of $1,223,144.83. Kevin? I'll move to Approve Bills as presented by the Chair. Thank you, Kevin.
I'll second that.
All right, I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Walker and a second by Commissioner Hadeen. Any discussion of bills? All right, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of Ratification of Bills, raise your hand. And the motion passes unanimously. We're on to Commission Member Disclosures. And for those new Commissioners, if there is anything that you need to disclose as far as a conflict of interest or business or such concerning any item on the agenda, you may disclose that at this time. So I'd ask if anyone has anything to disclose. And it looks like not, no disclosures today. So we'll move on to General Commission Reports and Future Considerations. And I will start with Commissioner Clapper.
The end of the month, and especially with the end of the year, it was pretty quiet for me. The only thing that I have is future consideration that next week Cemetery District Meeting will be postponed to the regular scheduled meeting in February.
All right, thank you, Evan. Kevin?
Yeah, end of the year was also quiet for me. Nothing to report.
All right, Bill, is there anything? I know you're on, so nothing to report probably, but any future considerations you'd like to share with us? Okay, thank you. Trish?
I have nothing.
Wow, we're moving fast. Mike?
That'd be nothing I'm doing.
All right, great. And Mary?
Yes, I did have Canyonland Solid Waste Authority meeting, and I brought the newsletter, one for everyone. And we're excited that we're going to be offering Hazardous Waste Collection on a pretty much a daily basis. Because it'd just make it easier for everyone. And so we're excited about that. And there's information on some some fee increases. And there is Christmas tree recycling drop off, right? So if you want, if you have a Christmas tree you don't want, you can take it either to Myob Landfill or the transfer station. Just make sure you take off all the ornaments and the glitter and such as that. So it's a nice newsletter. We're going to be sending one out every month. So you go on to the Canyonland Solid Waste Authority website and look up and it'll give you an idea of what's going on. We are excited that Mike Kinnerly, who has been hired to be the Director of the Solid Waste Special Service District, will be arriving this month. He's coming all the way from South Carolina. Very with lots of, you know, credentials and abilities. It was a long, arduous search. Took us a long time, and so I'm really excited. And after he gets his feet on the ground, I will have him come to the meeting and introduce himself. So.
No, and otherwise, that's about the only meeting I have. Very quiet.
Super quiet. And I also, for once, have nothing to report. All my meetings were canceled or didn't happen due to the holidays. Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, I forgot one thing. The Airport Board meetings are going to be on the third Mondays now instead of the first. Which is going to make it a lot easier for them to get their reports ready. It's been a real struggle for them because you get your information at the end of the month and then have it ready for five o'clock on Monday is always difficult.
Okay, great. All right, we're on to Elected Official Reports, and I will start with our new County Attorney, Stephen. Anything to report?
Nothing really much to add except for I'm getting into the office and I'm catching up with emails. If you folks have questions for me, Commissioners, please reach out. I'm picking up where I left, the predecessor left off. And so there's going to be a transition period. We've got some meetings set up. Reached out to some of you to set up some meetings. If you'd like to set up a meeting with me, please let me know. Otherwise, I'll be working with Mallory and my new staff to figure things out. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And Clerk Wojtek?
Not too much. This week, I will be attending the Olean Walker Vote Certification Training up at Weber State University. It's a really good opportunity that I'm really excited about. It's another sort of feather in the cap for Utah Election Administration and how well things are run in this state.
Great, thanks, Kate. On to our Commission Administrator Report. Mallory?
I do not have anything to add, but something for a future consideration would be, we'll have the special event quarterly intent to apply item at the next meeting. So perhaps having a workshop at 2:30 like we did last time?
I do have a future consideration. I would really like to be able to get on it, not have to be on the visitors' website when we're.
The Internet service, rather.
Internet service. I'd like to somehow get the Commission so that we have a more secure and, you know, less harder for people to get into.
So just like a regular Wi-Fi network and a password?
Yeah, and I had that once because my old computer wouldn't hook up to the visitors. And so Matt had to put me online because it was the only way for me to use my, and now this computer will, so now I don't have it. But it was nice because it didn't, you know, how it kicks you out. And I'm just not comfortable having, you know, having a public Internet with the kind of information.
Is this a true story, or did you have your privileges revoked for some reason?
Is Matt still here?
So like my laptop is set up to automatically connect, but we'll have to check with Mac. That might have been how it was before. That refuses to even give me the password.
You know, no, he set it up for me. I didn't get a password. He set it up so that when I came on, it automatically went on.
Was it with a county laptop?
No.
Okay, let's check with him.
What time were you thinking for that workshop?
Is that 2:30, you said, Mallory?
I think that worked well last time.
So that'd be the same process where we'd go over all the applicants for that quarter. And that quarter would be the one from July 1st to September 30th. Is that right? Or, yeah, okay. Great, thank you, Mallory. Quinn, do you have anything to add?
No.
All right, we're moving quickly through the agenda, and we are already up to our general business action items. So the first item on our list today is approving Volunteer Citizen Appointments to District and County Boards and Commissions. This being the Commission Liaison to the actually, it's not Commission Liaison. It's the Volunteer Citizen Appointments. So approving voluntary reappointment to the Airport Board. Be item A, and then item B would be approving voluntary appointment and reappointment to the Cemetery Board. So that would be so for the Airport Board, that would be Shaila Bryant, and for the Cemetery Board, that would be Terry Lewis and David Conde. And I believe we had no other applicants, and all of the applicants for both these positions were recommended by those respective boards. Yes, Kevin?
Yeah, I move to reappoint Shaila Bryant to serve on the Airport Board with the term expiring December 31st, 2026.
I'll second that.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Walker and a second by Commissioner Hadeen. Any discussion over Shaila Bryant's appointment to the Airport Board? All right, seeing none, I'll call for a vote on the motion. All those in favor, raise your hands. And the motion passes unanimously. Entertain a motion for the appointment to the Cemetery Board. Yes, Evan?
I move to approve the appointment of Terry Lewis and the reappointment of David Conde to serve the Cemetery Maintenance District Board with terms expiring 12/31/25.
Thank you. All right, I have a Commissioner, I have a motion by Commissioner Clapper and a second by Commissioner Winfield. Any discussion over these appointments? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the appointments, raise your hand. And the motion passes unanimously. All right, and this one will probably take a little bit more time. Approving Assignments of County Commission Representatives, Liaisons to District and County Boards, Commissions, and Committees, and Other Agencies. So I thought about the best way to do this. I've talked to a few of you about that. I asked Admin to pull up, included in our packet was a list of the right, here we go, a list of the Boards and Commissions. There are, so five of us are returned Commissioners. And I know some of these, we've developed longstanding relationships on and would like to continue serving on others, maybe not. And there are a few Board positions that were vacated by the outgoing Commissioners. I think the easiest way to proceed would probably be by filling in the blanks first. We could discuss that. Then, once we've done our best job of filling in the blanks, we could we could talk about opening up spots that current members are willing to give up, or it'd be easy for them to give up and move on and open those up for different members. And then, once we've got those nailed down to an extent, then we would move on to asking if there are particular boards that some folks might really want to be on, and maybe we could could talk about switching up some of those. We will have to, I think it'd be one motion to approve all of the Boards, I believe. But if it comes down to individual things that might be contentious, or that a few, more than one person really wants to be on, then maybe we could have a straw poll for that particular Board. How does that sound to the other Commissioners? Okay, great. Okay, then let's go down. I think it was at the bottom of the list, or actually, it's right there. There's a few empty spots. So it looks like the Canyonlands Healthcare SSD, is that correct? That one's a
I thought you were.
Currently serving on that.
Yeah.
You are, okay. We had, we had one that Evan was in on, the one that was in our packet, I believe, was correct.
You're on EMS, right? And that one, which is a nice dovetail. You're on EMS, right? And that one, which is a nice dovetail.
See, and yeah, if you all have it in your packet, I've pulled you, you've probably already done this, but you can pull it up and look at it on your computer. No problem. It looks like the first one on mine that is empty was the CNHA, the Canyonland Natural History Association spot. And I believe Josie was the prior liaison to that. That's a liaison, it's quarterly, so it's not a huge commitment there. Yes, Mike?
I would like to toss my hat in.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
That sounds, that sounds great. Anyone else? All right, when we get on, we can Yeah, it's all right, Alicia. Great, thank you, Mike. The next one is the Catastrophic Wildfire Initiative, the Governor's Catastrophic Wildfire Initiative. And that one is as needed. And I'm not sure who was on that or how often that one was.
I don't think they've ever met.
Okay, yeah, Bill.
Put my name on that one if nobody else has an interest in it.
All right, thanks, Bill. The next one up would be the Council on Aging Board. And I believe that was Commissioners, or former Commissioner Stock that was on that. And that one is second Monday every other month, so it'd be every, yeah, right, every other month. Yeah, six times a year. And I couldn't speak to to how that one goes. Anyone, we can, we can always, I think, come back to some of these at the end. Once we, the other thing that I was thinking is we'll see who who's carrying extra heavy loads or who who isn't, and we can kind of even things out. I I'd go out on a limb and say Trish is carrying a pretty heavy load right now.
Way too, yeah.
So let's see, Council on Aging. Then we have the the Economic Development Corporation of Utah, and that's as needed. I'm not sure.
It's, I've been kind of watching it. We'll periodically get email that there's a workshop or something like that, but I, I've, I've been watching it.
Is that, is that a?
Every once in a while, they might have a meeting about.
Is it a state agency or is it?
Yeah, it's a state and of Utah.
Right.
I'll continue watching it if you want to put my name there unless somebody really wants to do it.
Does kind of go.
Every once in a while, there's a Zoom meeting. It's pretty low and it kind of dovetails with the economic development that I'm doing. So
Right, right.
I felt that's why I've been watching all their emails. You will get their emails. Everybody will get them.
All right. Okay, did you want to, yeah, if you'd like to, that it does dovetail with the other boards that you're on, Mary, so I'm fine with that.
Is this a new meeting, new one, the Emergency Planning Committee?
Local Emergency Planning Committee.
So we actually have Cora here, our new emergency manager. So this is something that I believe, at least since I've been with the county, wasn't really up and running or active. And I don't want to speak for Cora, but I think she plans in the coming weeks or months to get that up and running, so.
And introduce yourself.
We, I think we'd actually, we'd actually planned on having her come up and give a report possibly at the next meeting. Or, or if not the next meeting, then then the first meeting in in February. But so she, we'll, we'll get to know Cora, Will. Yeah, thank you.
She's this, something you want, go ahead. Is this something you're going, that you want to kind of get your feet on the ground and determine what the committee looks like first, or is this something we should fill tonight?
Might be good to fill just with the TBD in the information in terms of the date and time and then it would give Cora some flexibility and at least some, somebody to represent the commission initially.
Okay. That's fair. Yeah. I'd, I'd certainly be willing to do that. That, that's interesting unless someone else.
I've been real involved in following emergencies.
You, you certainly have, Mary. Yeah, if you, if you would prefer to do that too, I'd defer to you as well.
How many commissioners do you think you're going to want on this committee? One or two or?
I think I think there's a model that they have followed or are going to follow, maybe, and that it would just be one and then various representatives from other agencies and first responders.
Okay.
But yeah.
Both for each other.
Okay. Great. All right, and we are up to, let's see, the Mental Health Board, so that's four corners. And that's fourth Tuesday every other month, so that'd be a six, six meeting commitment. Anyone want to volunteer for the Mental Health Board? We can come back to that one.
I was pretty close to meeting, sorry.
Right.
The next one.
Okay. Ah, right, so that would make sense to put the same commissioner on both those. So the next one is the Public Health Board. Sets, and that's the Health Department.
So they won't meet on the same day?
Yeah, it looks like, yeah, one meets before the other one, but it looks like they piggyback on each other. All right, we'll come back to those. The next one would be the the Special Events Advisory Committee. Mike?
Again, I'd like to toss my hat into that one.
Okay.
Unless anyone else is up.
Anyone else care to do that? All right, sounds sounds good, Mike. And looks like finally we have the Weed, the Noxious Weed Control Board. And that's the first first Monday every other month, so that'd be again, six meetings, six meetings on that.
Trish, you said you would do that, but I, after I looked at the list, you, you're on a lot of boards. Mosquito.
Okay.
But yeah. Let go of some of yours. Thank you.
All right, so that was, that was, we don't have anybody stepping up for that one.
Okay.
So Trish is or is not?
No, no, I was confusing the weed with the mosquito.
Okay, okay. And that was the the final one of the ones we had blanked. Is that correct, Alicia? Oh, yeah, then we can, well, in the next round.
I, I, I can do the weed control work.
Okay. All right, thank you, Kevin. All right, so I guess maybe we'll start at the top of those and I'll ask Evan if there's any that he doesn't mind vacating or would prefer to vacate. And then we can address those and work our way down the list. Does that sound good to you guys? And then, so I guess these would be ones that, yeah, it's right.
I'm comfortable with the ones I have. If somebody has a big interest in one, that we could see, but. Is any of those screaming to you?
I wouldn't mind getting that Arch's Special Service District Board.
Okay, so we can.
You might want to give him a history.
Yeah, we'll touch base.
You, you won't be going to many meetings.
All right. Yeah, I guess, I guess that's a good way of doing it. We can go down the list and we can, if, yeah, we can, i- if there's ones we're willing to give up or would prefer to give up, then we can say that. And then if someone prefer to have one of those, then we can, we can handle it that way. Is that, okay, I think that that seems pretty clean. Are there any other, anyone else see something on Evan's list that they would particularly enjoy working on? All right, then we will move on to myself. And I also, well, actually, Mary and I are both on the UAC and I, I didn't, I have to admit that I didn't do a whole lot with UAC. So I would be okay with letting that one go. The rest of them, I'm pretty comfortable on, although I will say that the Star Hall Advisory Committee has, I, I, has not met since I've, I've been on here. So that one is, that one is pretty minor. The rest of them are are pretty involved. Is there any one of those positions that anyone would prefer? Okay, and again, that's a shared one currently with Mary, so we can.
Yeah, we could do that. It's yeah, we can get together and talk. It's during legislative session is when we will be most active, which would, we should be starting right now. I signed up for a couple workshops with her.
Great. And did you want to, did you want to maintain your, your side of that, Mary? So we could still engage in it like to to Commissioner. Sounds great. Okay.
But everybody that goes up to the Capitol on some level will be working with them.
Right, right. Yep, that makes sense. Yeah, anybody else? Is there any one other of my ones that someone would like to take over? Okay, and you guys can all see this, I presume, right? Okay, great. All right, Kevin's? Anyone that you'd care to vacate, Kevin?
Um, I mean, I'm, I'm happy with them, but if someone, I'm, I'm willing to see my place on the Audit Committee or the Transportation Special Service District.
Okay.
So those are relatively light.
Actually, small positions. Okay, so yeah, the Transportation SSD Board or the Audit Committee. What, what is the Audit Committee? That's
Cody Dieter.
Oh, right, okay, for the county audit that the clerk works on yearly.
The audit, we need to add, correct. It's got two now and we need a third to switch.
Yeah, I saw that as well.
I would sign up for one of the three.
Okay.
Yeah, it's pretty easy.
Okay.
Cody does all the work.
Right. And then Transportation. All right. Let's move on to Mary.
Now, I've had a hard time seeing.
Do you want to, did you see it on yours, Mary? You can get mine as well if you want. Those are yours. So, yeah, starting with that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay. I, if anybody wants to take my place on the audit, it is a learning experience and you do know what's going on. Otherwise, I'm pretty pretty comfortable.
I'd be curious, is there room to add on some of these? And I know Mary is pretty tied to that tailings project, but is there room to add a second one so that there's two of us like some of the other
on, on.
Committees?
Yeah.
I, I think for, for some of the committees, there's like, you know, one commissioner like has a vote or something, but, but I think for all the committees, you know, you're certainly welcome to attend and and show up and do things. I know that often there's extra people at some of the committees.
Are non-voting. Economic Development is non-voting.
Okay, great.
Uh, Minority Authority is non-voting, Housing Task Force is voting, Tailings is voting, Solid Waste is voting, Travel Council is not voting, USU is, is voting, CCP, you don't vote on anything.
Right.
Just making, you know, the, the general point that if, if, like, maybe I'm interested in the Planning Commission, even though I'm not the official liaison, I can still show up at meetings.
Right.
Yeah, and that might be best just to make sure we have one clear assignment, even if it's not voting, just because sometimes people want to know who they can anticipate to be there, but I know it's encouraged in our policies to have commissioners attend. But for the sake of tracking, I think one person as an assignment would be very helpful on our end and their end.
Budget Advisory Board. Now, that's really interesting, but it's incredibly time consuming.
And it's time consuming at the end of the year, correct?
Nothing goes on.
Which one is that you're talking?
Uh, it's the Budget Advisory Board.
It's where you go to all.
So it's like a three or four hour meeting once a week during the fall?
So it's a big time. It's interesting that you really delve into the of the budget. You get to understand the budget and where the money comes from. It's a great learning experience.
And that month, month and a half is generally the month of November, October, November?
No, it starts.
I think it starts in September typically, right?
September, October, and then your whole
Okay.
That's, that's hunting season.
Right.
That's hunting season. I don't want you to take anything off.
Also, I'd add that none of, none of this is, we, we vote on this today and that's who it is, but there, there are circumstances where you, you, you may, we can swap out during the course of the year too, if it comes down to that. Trish and I swapped a couple of boards last year in January or February, March, I believe, so.
Evan and I have swapped past.
Yeah.
Are you wanting off the Budget Advisory Board?
I'm saying if somebody wants it, I'm happy to relinquish.
I've got an interest in it, but if you're asking because you do.
Uh, I, I know that it is a lot and it's been a few years since I was on it. So if I'm back up to the rotation, I'm willing. It is a good way to learn a lot of the ins and outs of the counties, so.
Yeah, it's, I think you'd enjoy it, Bill. I think.
Yeah, no, that's, that would be my.
So why don't you put, take me off and, and we, any commissioners can come.
Right.
It's not like.
Stay on or?
Yeah, I'll, I'll stay.
Okay, so.
He's really good at delving into the budget and understanding.
The numbers guy.
He's the numbers guy. All right.
I knew you said the Tribal Council Advisory Board was a non-voting, but if you wanted to relinquish one, I would be more than happy to either partner with you on that or pick it off you.
Why don't we partner?
Okay.
I, uh, I, I like the fact I'm working with August on those. We've got a real good, you know, thing going and, but it would be great to have somebody outside. And we don't get to vote.
Yeah, yeah.
So I just go.
That'd still be at the meeting.
But you, you know, you get to read the package and hear what people are saying.
And that is, that's pretty closely tied to the Economic Development Advisory Board as well, right?
Yeah, that's why I kind of like to be involved.
Right, that makes sense. Okay, I'll move on. Yeah.
I, I do think for our sake and for their sake and bylaws, it would be helpful to just have one person named or we could name one and say off to the no, off to the side of like will attend, but primary, secondary.
Completely fine to leave Mary on that one.
It's nice then if I, if I know that there's somebody that if I can't make the meeting, I can get a hold of. Please, that happens.
Okay, all right, great. Then we'll move up to Trish. Trish has a pretty heavy load here.
So boards that I'm willing to vacate are the, sorry, Southeastern Utah Association of Local Governments, but tied to that, the Triparte Board, they're basically, they're on the same day. And so you go to one and then you go to the next one. Just so you know, that's a pretty long commitment. It's like a four hour meeting. And then if you're, I think, Jacques, are your, your guests still down with the historic preservation?
Oh, yeah, I, I liked that one.
Maybe you could just take my name off of it because I just was not that great about going.
Sure, no, no problem.
That's okay.
Yep.
Um, and then were you interested in the REC Board? Because you need to know that it's really two. So it's the REC Board and OSTA Advisory Committee.
I would love a chance to look at both of those.
Okay, that's fine. I'm fine with that. Just tell them that I wasn't being a quitter. But I knew you were interested in that. I'm totally fine with that.
And I don't mind taking that sea lag.
Okay, good luck with that, Bill.
The next one?
The Southeast Utah Association of Local Governments.
Yeah, I did get a nice.
She got a really nice city.
Yeah.
But yeah, it's, it's a long route.
The other one that I've got an interest in is the Planning Commission. I believe that my background especially is what's leading me towards that. I realized that it's headed up by my opponent during this campaign, but with the land use and the building and the development that I've been doing for, well, since middle school and starting here in Moab has led me toward that. So I'd really like to put a plug in for that Planning Commission.
Okay, I don't want to give up the Planning Commission, but maybe next year.
Maybe next year.
And, and that's, and that's also a, well, it's, it's, it's non-voting, but it is something that, that obviously is, you can attend as a member of the public with the.
Right, but yeah, we have a liaison that, yeah, so.
Well, I just really feel like it's important that we start working with the builders and the developers in this community and bringing that experience to that board is, it, it needs to happen.
I understand. I, I have a lot of, lot of friends in the contracted community, so I feel like I'm, I, I try to do that. So I will, I will work on that even more. I I try to do that, so I will, I will work on that even more.
Great.
It'd be nice to get somebody to buy. When there's a vacancy.
We have some, we have some great, I think that commission is really diverse right now. I think it's a great. Really, yep, pretty fun.
Okay, um, so that takes care of those. I guess we circle back to.
Now, did, uh, didn't? Did you get rid of the? Legal governments or?
Yeah, that's no, no, Bill, Bill took that one. Yeah, yes.
The triparte is a part of that. Are you okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
And where is that on your list?
It's just.
Two lines above, I think, two lines.
Yeah.
Oh, right there, I see it.
So it's like that meeting's first in the morning and then it just kind of leads it.
Okay.
You will learn a lot.
Yeah.
But it is really, especially pre Zoom when you have to drive. Yeah, I don't have to.
Okay, so we'll get back to the ones that haven't been filled. I believe there is, was it three? Three or four? Uh, so the Council on Aging um. Economic Development. Or. Mary, you were gonna take the Economic Development Corporation, right? Okay.
So does anyone know, I mean, are these council and aging, are they long meetings, short?
Did you do those, Gabe, when you were on the commission?
Yeah, you didn't.
Should we look at what the division is right now?
I think that's a great idea, right, yeah, yeah.
And um while.
I don't think that's.
You're looking at that, um, it looks like there is one that was created last year that we didn't get on there. Uh, the Community Renewable Energy Agency Board that Sarah was on.
That's right, yeah, I I. Uh, yeah, I I had um, I I'd be happy to to fill in that one. I I'd I'd be more than happy, actually. I would take that, yeah. The renewable energy.
It's just so technical.
Right.
So.
Okay, so like, I don't know, is there a way to uh? To break it back down on the spreadsheet?
Well, the the commitment's so uneven, I mean, some of them are.
Right, yeah.
Some not very many.
Right, right. Uh, and they can be extremely.
So there's this two, two left, the Council on Aging and the Mental Health.
The Mental Health and the Public Health, which are kinda tied together.
On the same day?
Uh, right, yeah. Right, and one leads into the other one, it looks like. So one starts at two forty-five and the other one starts at five.
I mean, I I don't know exactly what's involved, but you can put me down for Council on Aging.
You probably wanna be both.
Oh, just just the Council on Aging, not the uh, not the mental.
I mean, the Mental Health Board and the Public Health Board, so they do Zoom, they need.
I think they do.
Uh, but there are other folks here in Grand County that attend, so you can't do a part of this.
I know um Josie had sent something in the past um. About the Four Corners one and saying that she would need to join virtually and they were able to accommodate, so. An assumption, but I I do think they have.
Can I look back at mine and see if there's anything I'm willing to trade out?
Uh, yeah, do you wanna look on my computer, Mary, or Joanna? Yeah, here you go.
Also, it's good that um.
I'll take your Canyon Country Partnership, but I know you won't pick that up.
That's exciting.
But you should come.
I know, I need to go.
It's it's big for me.
I know.
I'd like to, I'd actually like to come with you. I I I stood in for, I did a Zoom meeting, I stood in for you on one of those, those. It's really.
Like she goes on field trips up Rage Creek and.
Okay, uh.
Do you know, are there health boards, voting or non-voting? Uh, Gabe, you're in the vote. They are voting, okay.
I. I really like it, but it's a non-voting.
Or um or Bill or Mike, or there's something you'd you'd be interested in doing for like a year and we can, we can revisit it for sure. Um, next year, we did that. Last year, we we changed out of, we didn't go through a full process like this, but we did change out maybe half a dozen. Uh, board assignments.
Which one are you looking at?
Uh, tho- those are the the health ones, the mental health and the public health boards, and it it is an important board. It's a, it's a voting board. But again, that's a once every, oh, it's an every other month board, so it's not a.
Did we get somebody to take the local emergency planning?
Yeah, I I took that, but.
Okay.
Yeah, I, but um.
Bill, I heard one time that you might be interested in the airport board.
I definitely have an interest in the airport.
That only, that only, when I talked to Tammy about it, the only concern she had was, you know, Jenny's. Uh, red tail, and aren't you the contractor for red tail?
I am not a contractor for red tail.
Oh, then that's not an issue, so. Um.
Where would the conflict be if I was a contractor for red tail?
Then there'd be two people on the board that were working for red tail.
Okay.
And I that would, I did, I did think that was a good idea.
Currently, um, I have no contract whatsoever with red tail.
Well, why don't? I think really trade out those two boards. Or the airport board. If. If that would work.
It'll work for me.
And it's a non-voting, so. But it's important to go.
Yeah, yeah, it's important.
It's such a driving force.
Okay, thank.
So I'll do the other two if um if um validate the airport. Then, 'cause I did wanna add another meeting. And that's really only adding one.
Right, you're right, right, two and one. Yeah, and as far as the emergency, that that's a new one, Bill, that that just got created, so I haven't, we haven't, we haven't delved into that yet.
I thought it was still empty, so.
Yeah, but it is one that I would uh, yeah, I I I'm interested in checking it out and seeing how it goes, but it. It could absolutely be one that we.
But you're proposing to wait until we know exactly what, how, like, when it's meeting and how often before we host someone?
Right. Uh, was that right now, or or?
It's a quarterly.
Oh, it'll be a quarterly meeting, okay, okay, great. Yeah, that's not bad, thank you. Yeah. But I I am, I am very interested in that. Alright, just, I think I think we have a name on everything, is that right?
Um, at the end, I think this was mentioned, Evan, you're currently assigned to the. It's like.
The.
Criminal.
Justice.
Reform Council, and they haven't um met, and I don't think that they're statute, statutorily required to start. Uh, meeting until August, but I don't know if you still wanna do that one, or if we should leave it as TBDs since there are meeting dates yet.
I'm happy to have my day next to it for now.
Awesome, thank you.
Alright, uh. Okay, any, before someone could make a motion, any other, any other thoughts on this before we uh, before we vote on it? And again, I also, it is something that we can bring up with each other over the course of the year, you know, we could make some trades for some of these things. Or or one of us can take a board from another member.
I I do just have one thought, is there not a procedure for the fact of Trish and I wanting the planning commission? That that should have went to a vote?
Wait, if if you guys are both on it, we could certainly, certainly call for a vote on that. I could take a straw poll.
I'm just wondering, I.
Sure.
After reading through our orientation.
Yeah, but no, that's 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 absolutely proper, Bill, if you. Did you have a thought on that, Kevin? It looked like you were.
Yeah, no, I I does, I think in the policies procedures, it does say that if two people are interested, then we we have a vote.
Yeah, okay, so yeah, I would just, I would propose that we just take a straw poll and then someone can make a motion that way. We'd, or if someone wanted, someone could make a motion for this with one or the other of the uh. People who would like that position, but I I I think it'd be cleaner just to take a straw poll personally.
For the planning.
For the planning commission's spot, yeah. Yeah, yeah, so.
So I'm I'm.
Uh, I'll uh, yeah, I'll I'll just do a straw poll. All those who um would uh. Prefer to see Trish on the board, raise your hand. You can, you can vote for yourself in this too. Alright, and all those who who would prefer to see Bill on this, raise your hand. Okay, so that's a, that's, and that's just a straw poll, it's non-binding, so someone could, you could still make a motion as to that, but that just gives us a good idea as to where the. The motion might go. Yeah, yeah, Mary, were you gonna say something? Okay.
So do you wanna motion then to approve the whole list?
Uh, that'd be great.
For that now?
Yeah.
So, okay, so I, um. Get the right name for it, sorry. I move to approve the list of assignments of County Commission Representatives or Liaisons to districts, boards and commissions. And other agencies as presented on the screen that we've just discussed.
Great, thank you, Kevin.
I'd like to second that.
Alright, I have a motion to approve the uh board assignments as presented on the screen by Commissioner Walker, and I have a second by Commissioner McCurdy. Uh, any further discussion on this item? Alright, seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you all, that was, that was a lot cleaner than I. Than it could have been.
And Mallory, will you get that out to us pretty quickly, the new, the cleaned up version?
Yeah, and and especially the the new boards that we're gonna be participating on, um, knowing when the first meeting is gonna be, it's always.
Gotta get it in my day timer.
Yeah. Tr- Trish's old school. Alright, we'll move on to the next general uh business item, that'd be item three, approving ordinance vacating the existing western portions of Willow Springs. And Dalton Wells Roads, County B Roads located within the Utah Raptor State Park Campground, uh, Bill Jacksons, welcome, Bill, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. Congratulations to our new electors and. Thanks for all of you serving our community. This evening, uh, just to wanna clean this up on the, on the new Raptor State Park, as you probably in your packet, so. Probably won't go into great detail, we've had our public hearing twice and been posted appropriately and uh. I'll just build any questions if you have any.
Thanks, Bill. Yeah, we did, we did do a public hearing on this on the last um, right, on the last meeting.
So, so just in case there's someone in the public that wasn't at the previous two meetings, what what's going on here is they they wanna re- realign the road. Because of some campgrounds they wanna build, and they want us to vacate the right of way so that they can do the realignment, is that right?
And it's.
Close enough.
And it's for safety, isn't it true? Weren't they gonna try to make it a safer? Yeah, that's what I heard. I think that was the driving force.
Right, and and more or less, we'll just create one entrance and and take away the two.
Correct.
Yeah.
When are they planning to start to work on it, you know?
Yeah, it's kind of been postponed a bit, but I have not heard uh an exact date. Soon as possible, sure.
I hope so.
Alright, any further questions for Bill? I'd entertain a motion.
Sure, um, I move to approve the proposed ordinance vacating the western portions of Willow Springs and Dalton Wells Roads. County B Roads located within the Utah Raptor State Park Campground.
Thanks. Alright, I have a motion by Commissioner Walker and a second by Commissioner Winfield. Um, any further discussion on this? Alright, seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand, and the motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Bill.
Thank you, Bill.
Alright. And we're on to action item number four, approving grant award to the Housing Authority of Southeastern Utah for the purchase of a software platform. To optimize deed restriction management in Grand County and uh August Granite and Ben Alter from the Economic Development. Department, the director and. Ben. Excellent, sorry, sorry, Ben.
I'll let Ben speak to this to prepare.
Great.
So, right, we also have votes of policy to speak to any questions.
Oh, okay, awesome, yeah.
And uh, good to see the new commissioners here. Yeah, yeah, really great. So great to see you all here, new commissioners, uh, new attorneys as well, Bill through service, and great to see everyone, Happy New Year. So the first item we have is this uh grant award that we are proposing to present to HOSU for the. Purchase of a deed restriction management software. Um, this, uh, the first of all, to briefly discuss the funds, so this grant award would come from a two hundred thousand dollar. Grant that the county receives from the Governor's Office of Economic Opportunity, uh, the Utah Governor's office, that is. Uh, we receive a two hundred thousand dollar grants every year. It's not a guarantee, but as long as we put forth the good application, which we did, so we received that two hundred thousand. Uh, within that request, we lay out different brackets on how we want to spend those funds, and then our Economic Development Advisory Board. Helps us decide, once we get that award, how we spend that, if we want to change around certain funds, maybe one allocate slightly more to something. Or slightly less to something else. So this would be coming out of our seventy five thousand dollars of that two hundred thousand allocated towards workforce housing. So if we were to spend this grant, we would still have funds left to determine other programming for workforce housing support this year. This is just a piece of that. Um, the deed restriction software that we're looking for. Um, is going to help HOSU do something that they're already doing, but really bring them into what is, you know, a more automated and optimized world. Um, help them do what they're doing faster, and especially since they are short on staff as well, hopefully um, help them understand, you know. What the barriers are to deed restriction programs that they're currently working on, and I think the county will probably lend a lot from them as well through using the software. Um, as we want to look for a software provider, we met with three different companies, and it became clear that Rock Solid is providing this. Software is the industry leader in this right now, and so we're pretty excited about it. The Economic Development Advisory Board gave us recommendation. Um, I know that you were at our meeting, even though. You were the commissioner-elect at the time, and I think you were at the previous meeting that we discussed as well. So that some folks have subject matter experience and some don't, I'm glad to speak to the software and the county side of things. Um, when it comes to the actual deed restriction, how it's gonna be implemented, I'm actually really lucky that Lauren Bennett here, they might be better prepared to answer those. But happy to answer any questions.
So the, that eighteen thousand dollars is that an annual cost or just a one-time to get a setup or some mixture?
The software, one-time grant award, at the end of the year, we would reassess how the grant, um, how the service went and. Basically, I think we're treating this as a pilot. There's no expectation right now that we would pay for this a second year in a row. Um, I think the way HOSU is looking at it, and maybe correct me if I'm wrong, um, is that if this works out for the first year. Most slowly with HOSU and with other agencies like the Land Trust workout, who's gonna continue paying for it? But this would be a one-time payment for the first year of the software service.
Okay, and I might, I might not be remembering correctly, but you know, eighteen thousand dollars a year does seem pretty expensive compared to other software packages we've purchased.
I think they're riding the high, that's a very niche market right now for what they're doing. I I agree that it's a bit of a high price tag, but I also have sat through the demos and whatnot with the the Rock Solid team. And I think that it's definitely going to help HOSU significantly. Um, and I'm I'm eager to see what happens of it. I'm also encouraged that this is something that our Economic Development Advisory Board. The fourth, the application to the Governor's Office, we got it. It's a good grant for our program. It's also, you know, kind of supplementary to the Grand County budget, because it's coming from the Governor's Office. Um, so I'm encouraged by all those things, but I I hear your concern.
But Ben, you said you looked at three different vendors, is that correct? Your providers in all cost comparison, were they all in that?
They're like pretty exhaustive. Vendor.
Right.
Betting process, and it's not, it's not totally out of line, it's definitely other software, enterprise software packages that we've seen between like twenty to twenty-five.
Um, Mary? Yes, I said through those meetings and uh, the board for the economic development were. Asked lots of questions. I mean, it was grew, I mean, they were in the hot seat for a long time. Asking questions, making sure this is what they wanted, and we do need to have something because so many more. Deed restricted housing is going to come online here shortly and uh. It's a huge job. It's a huge job. It's a huge job. It's a huge job and uh if we can't. Keep on top of our deed restrictions are all the work we're doing for affordable housing will be for naught. So I think it's very important.
Yeah, Bill.
I guess I'm curious, it sounds like this is for Hsu's benefit, but where is this benefiting the county? I I mean, is this a grant, even a grant, although it's not coming out of our budget, I take it. Where's the benefit for Grand County?
So I mean, I can see that uh primary value of this is that it is. The county's policy interests expand the destruction programming through the HDHO, I think would be the prime example. HDHO is the county program. But the county does not manage clients for that program, Hsu does, so Hsu's management of HDHO, deconstruction clients is. That is fulfilling county policy, basically. Um so this is not, you know, this isn't to benefit Hsu, this is simply Hsu manages deconstruction clients at the moment. We're helping to build capacity within that uh program area out of a grant state.
And are are we supporting their um enforcement of the deed restrictions and and otherwise, or is this the main contribution we're making right now?
Uh this is the only contribution.
Do we want to have Ben? And do you want to, can we ask?
You you can come up and uh yeah, so so everyone on Zoom can hear you, especially Ben and YouTube. Thanks.
I would just, the only thing, you do pay us twenty thousand dollars a year to.
Okay, so now we're doing twenty thousand plus the eighteen thousand at least this year for the software?
Yes. I would also just add, uh this is not the my primary thinking going to it, but thinking about uh you know, how the county could benefit. Um you know, this is a relatively new software provider. They are working in a very niche space, and I expect to see them continue to grow in the next year. Um I'd like to think that them working with our community, which has a severe housing need, but also a severe number of hands working on it. Um I think that can bode well for a future relationship if this software does work out. Um I think it's a potentially good investment for a tool that could work out in the long term and seeing that software try to grow and understand our community specific needs. I think could benefit us in the future. I couldn't tell you how, I wouldn't want to put a price tag on it. Um but just knowing that these certain software companies are in this growth space and they need to get involved with communities like ours. That have such an obtuse problem with housing um to address it, you know, I I think that that's something that we look forward to paying back.
Uh if we if we do adopt the software, uh do we have a a checks and balances system uh set up? To see if the software is working.
Yes.
At its capability.
Perfect, yeah. So in the grant contract, it specified that Hsu is going to report to us to our Economic Development Advisory Board. Which is the one who makes the grant recommendation that we have before us, um at least twice this year, and in addition, they are encouraged to report to. Um our department, we'll be at those meetings anyways, and the Planning and Zoning Department, um. We work with Hsu a lot, they're extremely transparent and don't really worry about that, but I think the answer is yes, that is built into the grant contract to make sure they update us with. How it's working with not just the software, but responsiveness of the vendor, so we can understand from a number of aspects how this investment is made. Thank you, thank you.
Out of curiosity, how many deed restricted properties are we uh talking about keeping track of?
Right now, it's going to be primarily used for HDHO.
Right.
She's not a whole lot right now, but we have, as you know.
Sure.
A lot of.
Right.
Apartment complexes that are coming down the lines, that's kind of the forward thinking is, how are we going to do this when you have Ugate that has a hundred units of HDHO?
Great, Ben, yep.
A little bit harder to do that on just a simple spreadsheet.
Sure.
Well, I now I'm monitoring about fifteen deed restrictions currently, and then I think there's. I'm estimating between forty and fifty just within the next year, and then that's not even before the Ugate apartment building um comes to fruition, so.
Great. Thanks, Laura.
We're also hoping that this is going to start expanding. We have, we've been talking a lot with these guys about trying to expand other affordable housing deed restriction programs. We're hoping this kind of helps that move along. Um we've talked about voluntary, people voluntarily give restriction, which somebody has already done to Hsu. So that's also going to hopefully play into it too, so we'll expand the destruction programs in general.
That's great, yeah.
Chair Heather.
Yes. Reviewing uh reviewing the contract, I I personally would want to see more reporting requirements. They're a bit vague and ambiguous. I'd like to see. Um more specific nature. I'm assuming that the software takes a a shorter period of time to install and purchase and set up. So I think the first report could be done earlier than six months out. Secondarily, we will have reporting requirements. From the uh rural county grant that we have to comply with. I haven't had the opportunity to review all of those with Mallory. Um but those are some of the things that I see, not necessarily any problems with it, but I think the reporting could be more. Um bust. Robust and additionally add the requirement that they need to help us be able to comply with the reporting that we need to comply with. So I I'd like to see that in a language in there for an enforceability standpoint of the contract.
Thanks, Stephen.
But if we were to change the contract, that means we'd need to postpone approving it, not not at this meeting, is how. Yeah, did.
Likely, yes. I I'd have to have the time. I I haven't unfortunately had access to everything that I've I've needed to have, and so maybe to the next meeting. Uh for me to be able to look at all the reporting requirements from uh the county will have to do, and I'll have to meet with Mallory to do that.
I mean, I can speak to reporting requirements. We have a one-time annual report for this part A funds, um and it's basically how it's spent. Um so, yeah, it takes like, it's pretty straightforward, it's a happy, happy to speak to that. I I know one thing we've done in the past is. Approving conditional on attorney uh review.
Right.
I don't know if y'all could do that at this point.
Are you uh, is there a time uh crunch?
There is somewhat.
Yes, there's a time crunch.
Directly with the representative, they have a timeline to, they've been, Laura's been in contact for about six months putting this together. Um so they're very eager to move forward as well as.
Yeah. I mean, at this point, we're uh like, like I already said, we've been talking for about six months, uh and we're at the point where. Uh contracts are ready to be signed on both ends, so we're just waiting uh for permission approval, so. Um we had basically canceled out like right at the beginning of twenty twenty-three, was when we was able to enact. So I would say.
Yes.
But is is there a cash flow? I mean, if if we were to vote in this meeting saying that we're happy to. You do the eighteen thousand dollars, but we would like to see some revisions in the contract, is that enough for you to go, you know, move forward? And we'll get the contract nailed down at some future meeting, does that work for you guys?
We have to write check, and the check we probably could have cut to the contract.
Oh, I see, okay. But but just not, but you would, knowing that the check's, you know, in the mail, so to speak, that that's why, that's what I meant by cash flow, could you go?
I would be able to execute the contract.
Good, because I'm assuming the the with Roxola, that's between Hsu. Yeah, like there's two different contracts here, right, okay.
And and chatting with Mallory just now, I mean, we have, we already have the three bits that we're required to do. We have the documentation of that. I'm assuming that they sent to you guys in the emails. The proposals and the amounts for comparable programming of programs or software. So that that will be good. I just want to make sure that whatever things that we have to report up, and that's one of the parts of the reporting. Is the the necessary proposals that we have to seek out.
So it seems like our option, you know, we can just approve what's in front of us, or we can signal our intent to approve it some future meeting after. There's some tweaks to the contract between Hsu and Grand County. Those are great. Um Evan?
I was just gonna say, if August is comfortable with the reporting, I'm fine approving what's before us tonight.
Yeah, I I agree, I agree with that, I just I.
And the betting they went through was extensive and long and uh people, the board. For the economic development are pretty savvy people as far as, they asked some really good questions. Yeah, it was, so I I feel I feel comfortable moving forward with it as stated. And, you know, he can, you can work with Stephen. And, you know, you can be in communication if there needs to be any tightening up, right?
Right, but if the if the contract was approved in this form, I mean, that's just the advice that I'm giving, I'm just requesting a bit additional information. I can chat with them all. All I'd like, but if you guys approve the contract, they'll go sign the contract and um other documents as the attachment. Um there is a requirement that you can't make amendments to a contract merely by conversation, so it would have to come back. Before you folks again to make any changes to the contract, so I'm more than happy to make sure we're doing everything that we can, but once we approve the contract, the contract's approved.
Yeah, I mean, I I'm comfortable doing it either way. I I I think I would note that, you know, Grand County and Hsu, you know, we're not adversaries. We so we don't need a contract that's like rock solid that'll hold up even if. So so that that's why I'm thinking, yeah, maybe we'll try to get the next contract right, and we can approve this one awards and all, maybe.
And and I and I don't think it's it's not a tremendously large amount, I'm just saying in the future, if we're giving out grants, that's the goal is to make it cleaned up so that. Grand County, when they give out grants, that's something that's critical and important. We want to make sure that we're giving out the grants. And receiving what Grand County is bargaining for in the contract, and so if we want to see the software implemented, that's why I would like to see. Sooner time periods of reporting and things like that. Yes, in this incident, it's eighteen thousand, you might say, well, you know, if they get it to us in six or seven months. That's that's fine for the reporting, I'm just saying in the future, it's nice to have the consistency in the follow-through, and especially when we're contracting, essentially. In in a situation where we don't have a lot of control over that entity, the contract is the control that we have over the entity.
Yes, Mary.
I move to approve the one-time grant award of eighteen thousand dollars to the Housing Authority of Southeastern Utah. For the purchase, propose, purpose of purchasing and implementing the streamlined deed restricted management software. I'll second that.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner McGinn and a second by Commissioner Hedin, uh further discussion.
Um just sort of repeating what I said before, I um, I mean, I I think Stephen raises some. Some valid points, but on the other hand, because Hsu, Hsu is, you know, are kind of our partners on this, um I'm comfortable. Proceeding with a less than perfect contract in in terms of, you know, reporting deadlines and things like that.
Yeah.
Yes.
I I agree with Kevin that I think when this instance with Hsu that we can move forward, but I do also think that we need to clean this up for the future. That we don't run into this again. I think Stephen's got a pretty valid point, the fact that our contract is our. Only thing that we have that ties us to any credibility, so.
Great, thanks, Mary.
And I think with Stephen, this being his first meeting and not having time to, because normally the uh. Uh this is what our county attorney does. It's just. We're in a.
Organically, in the future is what you're trying to say.
Yeah, it will happen naturally in the future, because they send over all contracts to the attorney to get approved. That is standard.
Quite.
Quite standard.
Thank you all. Any other comment or discussion? All right, uh seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. And all those opposed, actually, everyone, it was unanimous, I'm sorry. Uh, great, thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Um we will move on to item number five, approving changes to special event grant and community event grant evaluation process, and uh Ben and August.
So um I again tried to provide a good amount of detail in the background, I'm sorry if that was confusing. We have two grant programs that we approved now. Last year, uh the special event grants and the community grants. The uh special event grants aims to uh support uh new. Uh events or existing events that focus on transportation, so bringing folks into town for certain events like. A festival or fair or something like that, or something more niche than that. Um on the other hand, uh we also designed last year a community event grant. Modeled similarly like a special event grant, but its goal is to incentivize new events that are community facing, they're not necessarily focused on visitation. And they are likely occurring during those off-season times where folks are looking for local programs to bring them together. The uh event programs, as you saw from the documents, are laid out in extremely similar fashion. Uh and they will be better this year. Um so with all that said, we uh had the application period. For these programs open towards the end of last year, throughout the fall, we received applications. We officially closed the application period. At the end of twenty twenty-two, but well before that, we were a bit oversubscribed. Um that's not to say that we always fund requests at a hundred percent. Um but we are oversubscribed for both programs when it comes to applications to those programs, um and some of those events are also coming up pretty soon. And so while we wanted to proceed with the way we had proposed the programs to the Grand County Commission as they were approved. Um we learned through a few different steps that having the Travel Council Advisory Board decide on these grant recommendations. Might not be the best thing. Um the first is that there are two event programs that kind of break out from the original advertising event grant scope. And so some of that institutional knowledge that the Travel Council has is helpful, but some of it is also a bit new for them. And then also generally speaking, our boards, the participation and the things that we're asking to them is really ramped up in the past year. Um they reviewed event grant applications for twenty twenty-two last year. Um and there were much fewer applications that proved to be a lengthy process that many members said, hey, we're not sure if this is. The body for us to do this anymore, and then our department also rolled out other grant programs and had some good success. Made together grant evaluation committees. We found that was a really effective way to bring recommendations forward to this body. So we're proposing right now is that we essentially uh change the programs as they're designed. So that both the special and the community event grants are reviewed by a committee of five people. Two from the Travel Council Advisory Board, two from the Economic Development Advisory Board, and one Grand County Commissioner. And then that is how we would convene and decide pretty soon on our event grant recommendations for twenty twenty-three. Um going forward, as I mentioned at the end of the background, our office is looking forward to workshopping a number of grant programs we have. And these are top of mind as well as the Star Business Grants, um and in the future, we'd like to see. A different way to determine, you know, these recommendations, maybe it stays in this committee, we've decided, maybe we expand that committee. Um but our ultimate goal is to workshop this so that sometime in this year, we can come up with a good process so that. When the applications for twenty twenty-four start coming in, we can address them in a timely manner and have them figured out towards the end of twenty twenty-three. Right now, we're trying to make sure that we can do this in efficient manner and also a fair manner. Um but we do have some events that are coming up relatively soon, and so we want to try and create this process just for the twenty twenty-three grant round. To address uh, you know, what we have to do with us. So I know that was a lot. I have tons of time to answer questions about. Programs as we proposed, workshopping the program later, um questions about applications I can answer as well, not in too much detail. But um anything.
So how would the uh, so two members from the uh Loberia Travel Council and two from the Grand County Economic Development Advisory Board. Would those boards choose the two members that would be on the grant committee?
Yeah, if we were to pass this, say, I would expect for us to bring this as an item to both of our boards uh in January. Um so that we could by the end of January know what our committee is and start moving on that.
And then similarly for our commission, that we have to put our heads together and pick our uh commission representative.
My understanding of the way that we propose this is that it's not uh like a formal uh body that. With great applications.
Yes.
A person from the public to join, and so for that reason, I don't know that you need to decide, you know, public, as much as just decide who wants to serve on the committee.
Right.
It would be a one-to-two time commitment, it would be pretty soon. Two-hour meetings, um there are a few commissioners here who have served on similar grant evaluation committees who can speak to it if folks are interested. Um we'd be happy to have any of you join this committee. Um yeah, but it would be sort of ad hoc committee. Um and then when we workshop the grants for looking towards twenty twenty-four, we determine a better process for how to do this.
So I guess this is a version of John's question, but suppose there's, like, who who ultimately decides who these five people are? I don't think that's spelled out.
No, I think that the Economic Development Advisory Board would get to go out there to members. And the Travel Council Board would go out there to members, and then you all decide amongst yourselves who would serve from the commission.
Okay, that that's how you envision it working, but that's that's not spelled out.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that, that that um.
Okay.
I shouldn't have assumed that would, yeah, that is how I was thinking of determining it, and um. Since this is just a sort of a temporary solution, if folks have better ideas of how we can, you know, ensure equity and whatnot, I'm open to suggestions. since this is just a sort of a temporary solution, if folks have better ideas of how we can, you know, ensure equity and whatnot, I'm open to suggestions.
Yeah, Bill, I'm curious about your numbers. It looks like there's two grants that are forty thousand each. You say they're considerably oversold. Is there going to be an attempt to increase those two grants or will they be locked in at the two?
Uh, so that kind of came out of the budget negotiation process. Um, and if the commission wanted to amend those budget amounts, the commission would be able to do that, but um, those conversations kind of took place um, October and November and they some were actually zeroed out and we brought money back from reserves to bring those numbers up. But, you know, I don't know if any other commissioners want to speak to that, but my understanding is that we we took just kind of an open, if you want to apply for funding, apply. We got all our applications and we tried to get as much money possible for those fundings, for those programs throughout the budget process. Uh, so I don't, I don't personally see, I'm not planning as a, I guess, staff, I'm not planning on more money for those two programs.
Right. Thank you. Yeah, Stephen.
I I haven't had the opportunity to review this. Um, there are items in here where it says that it looks forward to making additional suggestions and changes. I think it'd be better to wait and workshop the item so that I could have time to do the review, but ultimately it's your folks' decision.
I'm anticipating a question about timeliness. And so the the main pressure on this is that we we advertised this um in August, beginning getting applications. So we have um at least one event that's happening this month. So there there are definitely event organizers that are kind of sitting on the edge of their seats. Um, really hoping that we can pull this um uh structure together so that we can evaluate as soon as possible. But that that would just be the what we're seeing on our side, but that's the application side.
Okay, so yeah, we're looking at at hurrying this along and deciding who's going to be on the committee and then rolling with it.
Yeah, and I think a follow-up has kind of been phrased that there's been interest in workshopping all of the grants that are kind of office managers from Star Grants.
For sure, yeah.
To kind of whatever the Moab two-point-oh grant.
Yes.
Or whatever, that this would be wholesale reexamined throughout that process. The main ask for us is can we get an evaluation committee to review these grant applications so that we can bring it back, bring these back to the commission as soon as possible.
Likely the next commission meeting.
I ideal.
Right.
Probably, I I don't want to overcompensate, but.
Yeah.
It's that process.
Yeah, so yes, one more question. So right now, if we didn't create this new committee, it would be decided by the Melbourne Area Travel uh Travel Council, correct?
The Travel Council Board has been the recommending body. Um, so ultimately, the county commission makes the final say on any of these. The the Travel Council has just been a kind of a screener, basically.
So this theoretically could be done at a later date, you using the system that you have now. Do the recommendations without this being resolved at this time, bring back the recommendations to the commission.
Um, if it was just the Travel Council reviewing it, yeah, and so that that that's the aspect.
Right.
But yeah, we could. That's a good question.
I I I guess a similar point is we we could start reviewing grants, but this is written, there's nothing that prevents, unlike the contract, we can revise this at any time if there's some glitch that we want to fix.
I would move to approve the proposed changes to special event grant and community event grant evaluation process.
Thanks, Evan. All right, uh, motion by Commissioner Clapper and a second by Commissioner McGinn to approve uh further discussion. And I I this sounds reasonable to me. I think we could, we can throw this together. I was one of the commissioners who served on on previous grant boards and it's a really interesting experience. I really enjoyed it. And I think having a commissioner on that board is 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 a positive thing when it comes back in front of the rest of the commission. And I think having representatives from the boards, it's not a huge departure to me, but it's more of a kind of a. Yeah, it's a a small change that would probably be for the benefit of the grants. Anybody else have a comment?
No, we may have to wrestle for that. Ben brings really good snacks.
The only thing I wanted to add is doing this is adding level of rigor to the grant process.
Right.
Because, you know, it has been a receipt application, the Travel Council kind of discusses it, but we don't have, you know, for this grant in particular, the level of rigor that we created for the Star Grants, we have, you know, a rubric that you're expected to be scored on and those scores are objectives based on the average people. And that that's what's driving decisions rather than kind of like fifteen minutes of back and forth conversation, which is good conversation. But, you know, I I think for me, we're we're, you know, as a as a manager of public month, wanting to make sure that we have like, I think that higher level of rigor via this body. And that's the ultimate, that's the intention for.
Right.
Just starting again.
No, I got it. I got it. Um, so if we pass this, when, obviously, we'd have to pick a commissioner to be on, to be on the panel.
Now, we talked about this uh for a little bit last week of using the representative from the Travel Council for the time being, uh, right, and then it would quickly be ironed out in terms of if they wanted to be a formal assignment for the grant review. Uh, and I guess my desire for setting it up that way is I think it's important that if this is kind of band-aid, I'm sorry, if that's the wrong term.
Maybe a bridge.
Yeah, just making sure that we align that with the new special event coordinator. And we have the timeframes now in place with the quarterly reviews, so, you know, for now, keeping it as that commissioner who's assigned to economic development or the Travel Council, uh, just so that before we make it a permanent assignment, can we sort those things out? If that makes any sense.
Right.
Yeah, and then we, I mean, I would reach out to the boards via email to get, if we'd like to serve, then we can move as quickly as possible.
Through the, through that, okay, great.
And we can be.
All right.
If Mike is a little more, I mean, he just joined Mary and Travel Council. And a special event advisory.
I was gonna lean in towards that Special Events Advisory Committee. Uh, I would love to throw my hat in for that also, if if ever needed, if a second was needed to, I would love to attend, so.
I'll I'll let the 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 A-team decide on that. I think if not, Mary, then perhaps.
But and I believe how we left it is just one commissioner. We didn't say if it has to be Travel Council or Special Event Commissioner assigned, so.
All right, any other discussion or or question on this before we vote on the motion? All right, uh, all those in favor, raise your hand. And all those opposed. All right, passes. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Off the hot seat.
Um, we are up to item number six, adopting ordinance approving uh revisions to the airport minimum standards. And I believe we have Airport Director Tammy Howland on Zoom. Welcome, Tammy.
Hey, everybody. How you doing? All right, so tonight, um, what we're presenting is an update to um, our minimum standards that were adopted in twenty twenty-one. Just a little backstory on this, minimum standards, um, is uh an industry standard um for every airport in the country that um um, that has any amount of growth or receives federal funding, um, things of those uh of that nature. What they do is allows um the airport operator to set standards as far as development of the airport and what that looks like. Specifically, um, a lot of it refers to um when we get interest for building hangars um or any businesses that want to come into the airport. Uh, what this does is it gives us a a uniform, consistent measurement for how all of those deals are are put into place, how things are built. Um, and the reason we put them into a county ordinance is that having it as an ordinance gives us um some teeth to be able to enforce them. And so um, if you've all had a chance to review, there's a lot of changes that were more um, just um, fixing some of the table of contents. Um, the most significant um changes to it were some language about setbacks and lease lines. Um, a lot of these changes came about as as we were developing some hangar projects, um, we kind of were starting to look at these and realize that maybe we didn't quite word something um as well as it should have been. Um, so some of that wording is is fixed on those issues as well as defining lease lines um, and a little bit more explanation on setbacks, so it's less confusing. Um, so yeah, those are the major changes that were in there, um.
Great, thanks, Tammy. Yeah, I and I think we all had an opportunity to read through those. I I certainly did.
And this, this was um heavily reviewed um between um myself, um, Tara Collins, the assistant to the director um, and the county attorney, as well as reviewed by the airport board and approved. Um, so if there if there's any questions from the commission, I'm happy to answer them. But other than that, that's what we're asking for tonight.
Thanks, Tammy. Any any questions for Tammy?
Well, yeah, I think you just answered my question. So this has already been pretty thoroughly vetted, it sounds like.
Yeah.
Yes.
It was, it was a long process. With more than one meeting, let's put it that way, process. I think a couple of months more, more.
In just a little history, it's um, the minimum standards took about six years to develop before they were finally approved, so. You know, it's it it took a long time to get here and I and I think for, you know, a few years to come, we may, we may have to tweak some of this. Um, I think with any documents like this, um, when you start from scratch, you're going to come across things that that, you know, you didn't catch when when you were reviewing.
Right, right. So thi- this is just a little bit of fine tuning, it sounds like.
Correct.
All right. I would entertain a motion, Mary.
I move to approve uh approve the proposed ordinance repealing and replacing the minimum standards for the Canyonlands Regional Airport and associated ordinance six twenty-four in relevant part.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thanks, Bill. Uh, all right, I have a motion on the table by Commissioner McGinn and a second by Commissioner Winfield. Uh, further discussions? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. And that passes unanimously. Thank you, Tammy.
Thank you, commissioners.
All right, we've gotten to the end of our action, our general business action items. And for the first time in my career as a commissioner, we have no consent agenda items, which is exceedingly rare, uh, but we do have a public hearing. Um, and it is a public hearing. The public hearing is Grand County First Community Development Block Grant, known as CDBG. Public hearing for twenty twenty-three. Uh, Chris Baird, our Strategic Development Director.
Thanks, Jacques. Can y'all hear me?
We can, Chris. Thank you.
Okay, so this is federal funding uh from HUD. And it's administered the state agencies, including the Southeastern Utah Association of Governments, who we're working closely with. And this public hearing is predominantly for the purposes of advertising the funding availability and also soliciting uh from the public any potential uh applications for this funding. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jacques. He's got some information to present and I'll just stand by for if there's any questions for me.
Great, thank you very much, Chris. So I will go ahead. I will now open the First Grand County Community Development Block Grant Public Hearing for twenty twenty-three at five forty-five P M on January third, twenty twenty-three. Uh, the purpose of this public hearing is to provide citizens with pertinent information about the community development block program and to allow for discussion of the possible applications for the twenty twenty-three funding cycle. This grant money must be spent on projects benefiting primarily low and moderate income persons. Approximately five hundred and four thousand total dollars will be available to the southeastern Utah region in this funding cycle. All eligible activities that can be accomplished under this program are identified in the CDBG Application Policies and Procedures Manual. Interested persons may review this manual by contacting Chris Baird at C B A I R D at grandcountyutah.net. Examples of eligible products include, but are not limited to, construction of public works and facilities, for example, water and sewer lines, fire stations, acquisition of real property, uh, the provision of public services, for example, food banks or homeless shelters, and low to moderate income housing projects. In the recent past, Grand County has received funding for affordable housing projects and Americans with Disabilities Act, known as the ADA, compliance improvements of Grand County facilities. Grand County's capital facilities, stormwater master, C I B priority, and affordable housing plans are available upon request. These plans identify prioritized public infrastructure needs within Grand County. I now ask that anyone with questions, comments, or suggestions identify themselves by name prior to speaking. The clerk will include your names in the minutes and we would like to specifically respond to your questions and suggestions during the hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this public hearing? Yes, Ben. Uh, Ben and Laura, yeah, you can come ahead and uh, yeah, sit at the table, speak into the microphone. Great.
I don't know if you'd like, uh, Ben Riley, Housing Authority, Southeastern Utah Director. I do have like a three things slideshow. We don't have to do it if we don't want.
No, I think I think that'd be fine, Ben. Sure.
I mean, I'm here because I'd like to, we have a project that we'd like to pose.
Suggest. Great. Uh, yes. Thanks, Ben.
So we're interested in proposing that the county sponsor our C D G application um for water, sewer, and electrical infrastructure for tract E. That's at the Royal Crossing subdivision. It's one of the last tracts to be developed. It's got some partial infrastructure. It's got roads, sidewalks. That is up, does not have water sewer and rock mountain power. Um, it's going to be about twenty-five to thirty lots, townhomes, attached townhomes and blocks of four or six thereabouts. Um, we'll probably develop these in a mixture of mutual self-help, which we've done, uh, maybe some rental, some other programs after consulting with the uh, Macals. So, yeah, I I suspect the projects, we actually already got to RFP because we're wanting to move forward with this. Actually, the application is due at the end of January, so it's coming up quickly. Uh, we've already got out to RFP for civil design services. Uh, sorry, back up really quick. The project, the application includes civil design for infrastructure for the water sewer and rock mountain power and then construction services to actually install the infrastructure. So we've gone to RFP, we actually selected an engineer today, uh, set engineering um, to do the civil design and the cost estimating because we have the cost estimate in for the application, which is due January thirty-first, so we've been kind of working on this, so. We've done a few C D Gs with the county before, uh, namely at Wingate, that it worked out really well. We're up to that project of added maps. We've done a couple, I had Virginians, we've done a couple of these projects, so.
And just to add, I, we feel like it's a good project, um, that's very fitting for C D G. They really encourage uh projects that benefit um individuals with, living with eighty percent and under AMI, which is exactly what our mutual self-help program as well as Crown targets, so.
This is a preliminary plat of what it looks like. This was kind of done a while ago. We would probably play with this a little bit with a lot within probably the unit count right now shows twenty-seven lots, but we're probably down to twenty-six, just kind of on some preliminary discussions with our architect. Yeah, that's the tract. Um, on the right, Spanish Valley Tribe, on the left is Golden Eagle. Um, so it's that long strip plan right along the Spanish Valley Tribe. Yeah. So if you have any questions, I think we're just here to post a project.
All right.
Um, at this, we chatted a little bit about this earlier. It's kind of a fast movie. I think we would like to apply if the county commission approves that. I think that seventeenth uh, that potentially we have to approve Jacques' signature on our application.
Right.
And if you want to go to the next slide, I just have like a couple of, we've got eight and important dates coming up, so that's all the slides that I.
Great, yeah. Great, yeah, thank you, Ben.
Did you have a cost though, then?
I don't because that's what the civil engineering for, I suspect it's going to be about a hundred fifty thousand. I mean, um, I, I'm thinking of one hundred fifty to two hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And if the C D B G money was not available, how, what are the other ways you would pay for this?
Find some grant funds somewhere else.
Yeah, so some other state or federal grant most.
This is, you know, we've been very successful with C V Gs, we're going down the seven first. Done, like I said, Maps, Windy Village, most of our big projects have been funded in some part by C V G, so. How would we fund it? I don't know. We would have to, to, to search the surface down there.
Yeah. Bill.
My question would be, it feels like the land trust has put the infrastructure in that subdivision that they have there previously, so why are you? Putting it in in this phase rather than as they've done in the past?
So this is part of phase one, and they just didn't have enough money to put in the entire amount of infrastructure. They left a couple of, I think, community rebuilds has come to this mission in the past. And it developed some, some duplex parcels. There's a couple of parcels will be coming. To later this year for the multi-family track that we're going to do a skyline arch, uh, which will be a three two interconnect complex at a road crossing. There are parcels in a road crossing while the streets and the sidewalks are developed, they weren't able to have full funds to develop water and sewer in this track. And so there are some tracks that aren't fully developed, so they were hoping that there are developers like us that will come and. And, and develop those and do those ourselves. That was their intent. I think they have the funding, they didn't have enough funding to, to do everything.
Any other questions or, um, anything you'd like to share with, uh, Lauren, Ben? Mary?
So self-help houses on a Royal Crossing are deemed restricted, unlike everything else, okay?
More primary residency for people that live and work here.
I, I thought so. I just wanted to clarify that, since that's.
And they have resale restrictions, so they can't sell for a certain amount.
So it'll stay affordable.
All right, um, great. Thank you, Ben and Laura. Yeah, very much appreciated. Uh, is there anyone else at this time who would like to speak at this public hearing? Any, could we move to Zoom real quick to see if anyone on Zoom would, would like to hear or would like to speak at the public hearing? And it looks like not, so seeing no further comments, I'm adjourning this public hearing at this time.
Good, um, I, I did have some questions for Chris about C D B G in general.
Okay, sure, this would be, we've, I've concluded the public hearing, so now would be a great time to ask Chris. Chris, are you available for questions?
Yes.
Yeah, um, so you mentioned that there was, I think, roughly five hundred thousand dollars available for the southeast Utah region. Which, what is the, is that Grand and San Juan counties? Is it bigger than that?
It's Grand, San Juan, Emery, Carbon. And, uh. One other, I think. What's the other one that's in the southeastern Utah A L G? It's whichever. Not iron, it's Grand, Grand San Juan, Emery, Carbon, for sure, maybe one other that I'm forgetting. So just those four then.
And then the other question, um, you know, Ben mentioned a few ways that C D B G money has been spent in the past. Can you give up other examples of? Now this has been used, you know, beyond what was in the pack, pack of like.
No, I mean, the only one that I'm aware of that's not an affordable housing project is, uh, the remodel to the courthouse for, uh, Americans with Disability. Compliance issues, um, I asked. C D B G staff if they could send me a, uh, a list of what they have on record, but they didn't, they haven't sent it yet. So those, that's all I'm familiar with in, in my time. Is that ADA project for the courthouse and then all these, uh, has to applications. But, um, the city can also apply so that it's possible within the city that they have other awards that I'm not aware of as well.
Okay, thanks. Thank you, Chris. Any other questions for Chris or comments on grant process?
Um, I will say, I think the city might be looking at doing something also, so it might be just for collaboration. Good for everybody to find out for information sharing. They are looking at any of this here.
Thank you. All right, that brings to an end, uh, this regular Grand County Commission meeting, so, uh, I will.
Say if there's citizens to be heard.
Oh, actually, we are, yeah, Mary, very good point. We are looking at six o'clock. Citizens to be heard, which is only five minutes away. Are there any citizens who would like to be heard in the chambers at this time? And is there anyone online who looks like they're here to be heard? Doesn't look like it, um. What do you guys think about keeping the meeting going for another five minutes in case there are citizens to be heard?
I don't. It's afternoon.
We'll be back in two weeks.
Right.
I, I think it's fine.
Uh, yeah, I, I, I think since no one was here to be heard at the four o'clock, uh, time slot, I'd be comfortable with that as well, so I will go ahead and adjourn the Grand County Commission meeting. Thank you, guys.